Meeting to order. Um, let me see if I can find my notes that Hope's given me. Well, I don't see them. I know what to do.
I don't know whether that's it or not.
Okay, yeah, that's it. We're gonna con- we've convened in a quorum and I call this meeting to order. Mr. Kendrick, will you lead us in an invocation?
Sure.
And Ms. Sullivan and the pledges of allegiance. If you'd stand, please.
Father, we please, Father, we thank you for this day and we thank you for your marvelous grace. We thank you for the year that just transpired in our district and for all the great things that happened. We thank you for the extremely extreme dedication and hard work of our employees from the bottom to the top. And that's what makes this district so special and so successful. Father, we pray that you'll be with us during this meeting, that you'll give us discernment and knowledge in how to answer questions and to make decisions that we need to make for the district. We thank you for the rest that some are getting this summer and for our children and for their parents. We just pray you keep everyone safe and watch over them and keep them in good health. Stay with us tonight again and let us be directed by you in your name we ask you. Amen.
Amen.
Would you please place the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the Texas flag.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Did it get stolen?
Word, Jody, Jody.
Oh, okay, I got it. I thought it got stolen.
The board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Section 551.074, for the purposes of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. Let the record indicate before we do that, that a quorum of board members is present, that this meeting is duly called, and that notice of this meeting was posted in accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, Texas Government Code, Chapter 551. Um, I don't need, do I need to read out the members that are here?
I wish you would.
Okay. Members present are Ms. Nelda Sullivan, Mr. Jack Bailey, Mr. Marshall Kendrick, and myself, Vicky Morgan. Fred is here. He's just not in the room at this time.
Not here.
Right. Ms. Kiana, Ms. Kiano and Mr. Fernandez are absent today. So, um, we're going, as I said, we're going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074, for the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal of a public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the code of professional responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, when the district seeks the advice of its attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. We'll reconvene in open session as close to seven as we can get in here.
Is the policy committee going to meet first?
Well, it's not on here.
Is it not on here, Hope, on the agenda? Maybe I handed her the wrong thing.
It's on page one. Those two, personnel and then policy.
Okay, so we're doing personnel first?
Well, that's up to you. You're just both on that sheet.
Um, let's go ahead and get policy over with. I have to read this over again, though. Do I need to read this over again if we do policy first?
I'll read it.
Okay, all right. Then let's go ahead and proceed with policy.
Okay. Okay. Uh, where's my trusty assistant?
I'm here.
Okay. All right. I am yar and luck. I am y'all's policy chairman this year. And so I was, I read some information here and Jody's gonna go over it, but there's a couple of things I wanted to bring to the forefront. One was the issue on, and you'll see what we're talking about here in a minute.
Oh, good.
On page.
He's going to the book now.
And I'll go, I will tell you what I'm, I was looking at and then we can go back and discuss.
Which book? Are you going to the big book?
I'm going to the big book.
Okay, go ahead.
Big book first.
Page.
And the, on page 188, proposed revisions on construction contracts, the boards delegate the superintendent or designate the author to determine prior to advertising, et cetera, et cetera. Then you see it's blanked out, the boards shall determine the project delivery contract award method to be used for each construction contract valued at or above $50,000 and up to $500,000. So where the, when I first saw that, I remembered, of course, we've been on here long enough, we've seen it go from $10,000 to $25,000 to $50,000, but I wanted to make y'all aware of that it's going to $500,000 now. Now, basically, what you're looking at are just the, correct me if I'm wrong, Jody, are just the, uh, the way, the methods, or how it's gonna be bid, or so on and so forth.
Yeah, so what, what this policy does is our CH local policy actually doesn't, delegates to the superintendent the authority to determine.
Or my designate.
Or her designate. The authority to determine what purchasing method we use in specific situations. And then CB local didn't make any sort of delegation. So what we're doing with it is, so for purchases that are for construction contracts specifically in CB, it's applying to construction contracts, that are, fall between the $50,000 to the $500,000 amount, this policy revision would provide the superintendent or her designate with the ability to pick the procurement method that we're going to use to secure a contract. Then when we get that contract, we will still bring it back to you for approval before the purchase is finalized. So it would just provide her with the authority to make the decision about the purchasing contract. The reason we set the 50 to 500,000 limit is anything under $500,000 is typically what we use something other than competitive sealed proposals for, whether it's competitive bidding or jock contracts, or, you know, in our local agreements, which we don't really use often in this scenario, it's normally bidding or jock contracts specifically. And so, anything over $500,000, the edits to policy would mandate that we use competitive sealed proposals, which matches with our current practices. I talked to Kevin because Fred had asked the question on how many jock contractors do we have at the moment, and he said we work with three specifically. I did not ask which three, but.
It doesn't, it doesn't matter. I mean, as long as, as long as there's more than one jock contractor out there, that was my concern, was that we don't, if we only had one jock contractor, basically that, that work between 50 and 500,000 was gonna go to that one jock contractor. And then you could take a project and that, and I'm not saying this is gonna happen, but someday we're not gonna be here and they'll still have these same rules. Somebody's brother could be married to somebody's sister and they'd be getting all the same work over and over and over. So I had some concerns there, so I wanted to bring that up to y'all and let y'all, y'all know about that.
What was the, what was it before, Freddie, you know?
I believe it was 50, wasn't it? And then every, then, well, it says here.
Basically, what the language of the policy said is the CB, the CH local said that we were delegating the method of procurement to the superintendent or her designate to determine. And then CB said that you guys were gonna determine it. So, um.
Which in some months, Kevin, that could be in weekly meetings. I mean, depending on what time of.
Yeah, and then in CF, or CVF, which is specific to construction contracts and job order contracts more specifically, it said that the board was going to approve each job task or purchase that exceeded $500,000. So when you looked at CH and you looked at CVF, we delegated in CH the super, the ability to determine the purchasing method, and then in CVF, we said, okay, anything over $500,000, that's a jock contract we wanna see. So there was this.
Conflict.
You know, conflict or confusion that could be cleared up by changing the language in CB local to specifically say, if it is a contract between 50,000 and 500,000, specific to construction, which is where we would utilize jock contractors, then we delegate to the superintendent the authority to determine the purchasing method.
So how long have we been doing CH local? As long as you've been here?
Yeah, that's been the, the method that we've followed.
Person who's turned in pricing. Isn't that correct in your jock contractor? Isn't he a, an individual who's set pricing and already given it to you?
We use the jock through.
Gotta come to my.
Right, so job, job order contracting can only be used for certain tasks and functions, correct? And that's maintenance, repair, alteration, renovation, remediation, or minor construction. So if it's new construction, if it's a total overhaul of an HVAC system, we, we can't use job order contracts for that. It's for those jobs that are maintenance in, in manner, but that are too big of maintenance projects for our own maintenance department to handle.
Like PHS's marquee being driven through. That's happened twice in the last couple of years. The marquee was driven through.
Those carpeting.
Chiller replacements.
Chiller replacements.
HVAC.
If it is an HVAC repair, no. If it is an HVAC overhaul, that's typically considered construction and we have to go through competitive sealed proposals, correct? Or at least.
It depends if it.
Yeah, competitive bidding.
Depends on what the cost is, doesn't it?
Well, it depends on.
The way this says, you've got up to 500,000.
Right, but there's still only specific things that you can utilize jock contracts for, and if it's considered an overhaul or an upgrade of the system, that's considered new construction and not maintenance, and you're not allowed to use jock contracts on items that are considered new construction or like overhauls of a system. Right?
Yes. And one other item, I think, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong, I think by statute we can go, actually go up to a million dollars on a jock. We would never do that, anything, we wouldn't feel comfortable going anything over 500 without putting it out to bid and try and get the best pricing in. So that's just the way we, we have arranged things for 500, so.
Anybody have any questions?
Just wanted to bring that to y'all's attention.
Okay, Fred.
And my last thing on, on policy that I wanted to bring attention to, everything else is fine, is the, take the small book, go to page.
Can I ask?
Yeah.
So you're saying we would take bids on a $500,000 repair, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything over $500,000 will do through competitive sealed proposals.
Okay, what if it was 498?
They don't have to take them.
If, it depends on the nature of the thing. It would probably be bitted out at that point, just.
My concern, Jack, is that, I don't have any doubts that Kevin's gonna do that, but his person that takes his place 15 years from now may not do that. That's, that's always.
No, I understand, I understand that. I just was kinda thinking about what's going on today.
Like Beverly Hills roof replacement, that was like 900,000. We, we did that out, got a pre-able bids, did a MCK, did the ranking, the board to approve that board, so we would do that for any next.
Do you have any examples closer to 500?
What about, what about 280? Let's talk about 280.
If it's, so under the.
And I'm, this has nothing to do with changing a policy. I'm just curious, I, I assume it would, well, I'll hold my assumption.
Well, the approval of the project comes back. It's the procurement and with, method in which we, right?
Unless it's a jock.
The approval for anything over 50,000 is still coming back to you.
That's what she said.
Still approve the project, yeah.
It just delegates to Dan the authority to pick the method of procurement.
I, yeah, I understand that. Now, I, so I understand what y'all are saying also, but I still have that question. So you're saying, well, go ahead.
Well, like a typical chiller replacement might be 250, 300,000. And we would use purchasing cooperative or some purchase like that to move forward. So we would, the cooperative would do the bidding for us and we would take advantage of that. That's just one example.
Okay, that's, that's what I would have assumed.
Okay, the only other item that I, I picked up on, on, on the, the local policy and on the little booklet, is page 20. And if you look at the bottom item, Tasby and their wisdom have recommended doing away with the exit interview and exit reports. And so that's, that's kind of an established method of letting somebody out or giving them the opportunity if they wanna visit with the principal or their supervisor or whatever the case may be. And I just felt like that either one or two things, either need to be pulled and looked at strongly, or make a motion, we can add it.
I mean, we're still gonna be doing them, so.
Right, so what.
Should we just leave it in policy or they recommended not?
Yeah, and we talked about, what Tasby was recommending was that that wasn't really a necessary board directive, that that was something more that should be in our administrative, they didn't discourage it, the practice of it, but they felt like that was more an administrative regulations piece that can be, you know, compounded on with policies and procedures about all of the other exit, you know, things like checkout of materials and giving all your keys back and your technology and those sorts of things, that that was it one step of the process, and so it should be in your administrative procedures. I talked with Fred, I talked with Keith. No one has any issue with leaving it in policy, so if we would like to proceed with it there, what I would recommend is if you accept all of the other changes in update 107, that we'll just make the motion tonight to adopt update 107 with the exception of DC local, and move forward with the rest of the policy update, and then I will bring back to you in July, the other edits that are contained in that policy, because that is, reflects changes to the Texas Educator Code of Ethics that I think really need to be included in that policy, and that we need to make sure get in there before the start of the next school year.
And if you wanna make somebody your policy chairman, you can.
Go make your motion.
Okay, we'll make, oh, you'll type it up and we'll make the motion.
Yes, I'll, I'll type it up so that you have something in front of you.
Okay.
When you make the motion in the meeting.
Thank you, that's all I have on policy.
What if you're not able to do the exit interview? What if they refuse?
So if they refuse, we'd make any best effort. The policy language says if possible. So we will have someone else sign refused exit interview, unable to contact, you know, when we proceed with the, that exit process.
If, if possible. Well, I know it's splitting hairs, but, so then you, we wouldn't be following policy.
No, actually, it says shall be conducted if possible.
Okay.
And even, and we still prepare an exit report, even if we can't contact them, we will literally say, you know, Keith or the principal will sign it and say unable to contact, or refuse to attend, or, you know, refuse to sign, or whatever it is that they chose not to participate in.
Anybody got a pair of glasses I can borrow?
I'll take yours.
Hold on your mind, but you let me read.
Mine are purple.
Does anybody have any other questions about anything else in policy?
Anybody else have any other questions? Okay, the board is going to adjourn to closed session pursuant to Texas Government Code, Sections 551.074. Here we go again. For the purpose of considering the appointment, employment, evaluation, reassignment, duties, discipline, or dismissal, public officer or employee, or to hear complaints or charges against a public officer or employee. 551.071, to consult with district's attorneys concerning matters on which the attorney's duty to the district, under the code of responsibility, professional responsibility, clearly conflicts with the Texas Open Meetings Act, when the district seeks the advice of an attorney about pending or contemplated litigation or a settlement offer. 551.072, for the purpose of discussing purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property. And we will reconvene in open session once again near 7 o'clock. Going to reconvene in open session. I thank you for your patience. First order on the agenda is special recognition. Dr. Powell?
Yes, board members, we're excited tonight because we're gonna recognize some wonderful volunteers. We're gonna honor our district outstanding volunteer award recipients, and we're blessed to have so many in this community that support our schools. So let me start, and I think Cindy, you're ready? Okay? We're gonna start with our outstanding adult volunteer for elementary, and his name is Mr. Trent Moses. He's the father of three, whose two sons attend Stutchberry Elementary School. When his eldest son entered school two years ago, Mr. Moses approached Stutchberry administrators about the watchdog program. He wanted to be more involved. Thank you, sir. He talked to them about researching the watchdogs, dads of great students, and now it's in its second year at Stutchberry Elementary. He volunteers, he's the program's top dog, how about that? And he's a tireless cheerleader, motivating fellow dads to volunteer. He's well-known around the campus and is a favorite watchdog among students and staff. Mr. Trent Moses is truly making a difference at Stutchberry Elementary. Next, we have our outstanding adult volunteer for secondary. That's Mr. Troy and Mrs. Dana Holder. And they have been involved, parents at Pasadena Memorial High School, since their son was a freshman football player in 2008. They started volunteering with the football booster, and they have continued for eight years. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Even if their child is not involved any longer, they're still helping out. Once their youngest son became involved in theater, they began to volunteer with the theater program. They were instrumental in building sets and attaining donations for musicals. They have enormous pride in anything Pasadena Memorial, go Mavs, and they're great supporters of the campus and district. Next, we have our outstanding student volunteer for elementary. We have Astrella Godina, who's an outstanding student volunteer for South Shaver Elementary. In the classroom, she helps all students. She often reminds students of their jobs and offers her assistance if needed. If she sees trash in the hallway, or she needs to pick it up without being asked, her classmates feel comfortable in asking for her help, and they know that she will do her very best to help them out. She demonstrate, I didn't, you don't look like her. She demonstrates a good example of volunteering all year long. Her principal is here to receive.
Thank you.
Hold on, I'm really appreciate it.
I will do that.
Oh, thank you.
Thanks.
We have our outstanding student volunteer for secondary. Are they here? Okay, Alejandro Torres is a student at our Pasadena High School Early College. He has volunteered his personal time to come and help first grade students. Very good. During math tutoring at Parks Elementary. The students enjoy time because of his enthusiasm, charisma, and dedication. Every time he comes to Parks, he's polite with the front office staff, and they love him to assist from this Pasadena Early College High School. Join me in congratulating Alejandro. Another special word, our outstanding grandparent volunteer. We have Mrs. Jan Mays. She served countless hours at Golden Acres Elementary. She carries a smile and a positive attitude, no matter what the job of the day is. She's willing to help and goes far beyond the call of duty. She does it all. But most importantly, she's worked and built positive and caring relationships with the students of Golden Acres. She continues to impress the staff with her dedication to the children and school. Next, we have our outstanding small business, business volunteer. For the past 10 years, Shared Resources Credit Union has given hours of their time. Well, hello, lion friends, how are y'all? Congratulations. Hi, good to see ya.
Thank you, awesome. I appreciate your support.
They mentor our students at Gardens Elementary, this year at Morales Elementary, and they have been fortunate to have the opportunity to work with mentors from Shared Resources. They volunteer each week and also have provided and taught a personal financial literacy curriculum for the fourth graders to help them prepare for STAR and begin saving for their future. They've also donated to the district events such as host. Their years of dedication and resources for PISD teachers and students is truly appreciated. Our outstanding large corporation volunteer is no stranger to PISD. Phelps Insurance has been an icon in Pasadena for decades, sorry, icon. Congratulations. They have sponsored, donated, volunteered, mentored, and filled just about any role any Pasadena school and administration asks for. This year, Teague Elementary nominated Phelps Insurance, saying Ken Phelps has been overly generous to our school. He's always willing to give, so a huge thank you for supporting our school, and that goes from all of Pasadena ISD. Thank you, thank you, thank you. I told you we have a lot of people that volunteer, so hold on. Brighter Bites is our outstanding organization volunteer. They've partnered with Parks Elementary to provide fruits and vegetables, recipes, and to promote healthy lifestyles among the staff, students, and parents. Brighter Bites comes twice a year, in the fall and the spring, for eight weeks at a time. They set up, they bag, and they distribute the fresh produce to parents and students, all free of charge. The Parks Elementary School community loves the program because it allows them to learn and maintain a healthy lifestyle. Another wonderful group, our outstanding student organization volunteer, the Sam Rayburn JROTC, led by Lieutenant Colonel Alan Mooneyham. They participate and they help out in so many ways. One example is the Pasadena McDonald's Invitational.
Thank you, good to see y'all.
They also help out with field day and winter ball for special education, and the color guard presentations for so many events. Also, they were at the Houston Astros this year, isn't that correct? For the past two years, they have served as mentors to students at May Smith Elementary. No matter what the event, they never ask, are we done? They always ask, is there anything else that needs to be done? The Sam Rayburn JR, I'm sorry, I can't speak tonight. JROTC is well-known, award-winning, and Pasadena ISD would not be prouder of this fine, or could not be prouder of this fine group of young men and women. So thank you, thank you, thank you to them. Think we're gonna get some pictures of this fine group, so if y'all will follow Mr. McCauley, and thank y'all, it's good to see ya. Appreciate everything you've done all year long. Do we have any parents of the students that were here tonight? If they would please stand so we can recognize you? Anybody? All right. Any husbands or wives of our volunteers? All right, thank you, board members.
Thank you. I have a very special presentation, and it's my honor and privilege to be able to present the president's gavel to Nelda Sullivan. Nelda led us for this past year, and I don't know of anybody that represented the board any better at, at many, many, many events. Thank you, Ms. Sullivan, for your service. Thank you very much. It was certainly my pleasure. Now we move to public comments. We have one comment. I don't have a last name, I just have Michael. Is Michael here? Michael, you want to come approach the microphone, and you have five minutes for your comments. And Mr. Kendrick will tell you when you have one minute left.
I, okay, I'm on. My name's Michael Austin, I am a resident here in Pasadena. I am, I have been looking into, um, different areas that have to do with mysticism, occultism. It's something that I do as a hobby. But anyways, in that process of going through that, I came across what is going on with the Satanic Temple here in America right now. Most people are probably unfamiliar with what I'm about to say. Most people are probably unfamiliar with what I'm about to say. But right now, the Satanic Temple has moved on the school districts in this country that have what's called the Good News Club or any Christian club, after-school clubs, and they're countering this with what they call the After-School Satan Program. This program is, if you read through their literature, it's, you can find this online easily. They are appealing to elementary student children, trying to-- they claim that it's under a humanistic approach, a rational thinking type of avenue for their club, but I've looked into it deeper and it's got the spiritual overtones that are attached to the Satanic Temple now. I don't have children in this school district, I've already raised my kids, but this burdened my heart and I went into a few schools here locally, trying to figure out how I would pursue just voicing my opposition to this. It led me to where I am now. I have met with one of the leaders here earlier today and expressed my concern about this. I have spent a great deal of time researching what's going on in this and what this, the potential impact this has on our community, on our children, the impact it has on their minds. And, you know, I can't speak for everybody, I want to be fair. You know, we all can choose what we believe and such, but I am a Christian and I believe in what the Bible teaches and this particular group is in complete contrast to this, to these values that I hold dearly. And many, I would imagine, agree with me. Now, constitutionally speaking, legally speaking, they have a right. If we can have our Good News Club, they can, in fact, have their After-School Satan Program just the same, as far as the law is concerned. My goal here is to just bring awareness to people. I want to encourage you folks to go and look at, look this up. Go and look at what they're about, what they're trying to do. They've managed to make it into seven other states and they currently have this After-School Satan Program in seven school districts in Austin. They're making their way through Texas. I don't know which direction they're headed next, but I would imagine they're gonna make their way into the Houston area soon.
You have one minute, Mr. Austin.
Thank you. So, I, my own, my goal for being here, my goal for speaking with the lady I spoke with, and it's just to let you folks know that this is what's going on. And if you, any other believers out there share the values the Bible teaches, then this should be of great concern to you. I encourage you to take a look at what this is about and I just wanted to make a written record of my opposition to this and also, like I said, let you folks know, this is, this is real. This is happening, this is going on, this will be here if something doesn't change or people don't stand up and say, hey, we're not gonna tolerate this regardless of, you know, the right for this to exist. So, I, that's, that's the reason I'm here and so it's called the After-School Satan Program. It's targeted towards our elementary kids, so please take a look. If you have influence, if your heart's burdened, step out. Don't just think about it, act, because this is having an enormous impact on the school districts that have allowed it. So, I don't want to allow that in, into this town and I'd love to kick it out of Texas, but it's already in Austin, so that's why I'm here and that's my heart.
Thank you, Mr. Austin. Thank you for your comments. We're gonna move on now to the consent agenda.
I move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is Personnel Section. Mr. Roberts.
Madam President. I would like to move to approve the administrative personnel addendums A through I.
Motion has been made by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Mr. Kendrick, to approve addenda pages A through I. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Mr. Roberts, would you introduce those?
Yes, ma'am, I'd love to. I'm gonna announce your name. If you would, please stand and then I will, after we recognize you, I'll ask you if you have any family members with you or friends you'd like to recognize and if they would stand also, we'd appreciate it where we can see who the responsible parties are. Anyway, first one we have is Erin Amaro. Welcome. Erin will be, let's see, is being approved, Ms. Erin Amaro, for the position of counselor at San Rayburn High School, home of the fighting Texans for the 2017-2018 school year. Do you have anyone with you?
Yes, I have my mom, Linda, my husband Hugo, my grandparents Joyce and Tommy, and my stepmom Jo.
Okay, next is Brenda Gutierrez. Hello, Brenda. Brenda is approved for position of counselor at Pearl Hall Elementary for the 2017-2018 school year. Do you have any one with you?
Yes, my husband Roy, and my son Brandon, my son Roy, and my cousin Lisa.
Okay, Veronica Suarez. There she is, okay. Approved, Mrs. Veronica Suarez, for the position of counselor at Mac Masters Elementary School for the 2017-2018 school year. Welcome. And do you have anyone with you?
Yes, Uncle Crow.
Oh, good.
I have a husband Andy, my parents, we have one, my brother-in-law, my sister, my brother-in-law, my sister-in-law, and then our new principal.
That's great. All right, the next one, I don't believe here, is Letitia Sanchez here?
No, but I'm accepting for her.
You're accepting for her?
There will be no Academy Award.
Welcome, Letitia. This is to approve Mrs. Letitia Sanchez for the position of counselor slash parent coordinator at Burnett Elementary for the 2017-2018 school year. Very good.
Tell her congratulations from us, please.
I spoke to her yesterday and she said, thank you so much for the work, but give her a second too.
Thank you. All right, next is Brenda Sands. And Brenda is approved, Ms. Brenda Sands is for the position of counselor at San Jacinto Intermediate School for the 2017-2018 school year. Welcome. Do you have anyone with you?
Yes, my mom, my dad, Roy, my close friends, and my new team, our counselor, principal, and teachers.
Oh, great. Okay, Tequila Evans Johnson.
My gift.
There you go. Okay, Ms. Tequila Evans Johnson, for the position of licensed specialist in school psychology. You might want to talk to some of these people. For the 2017-2018 school year. And do you have anyone with you tonight?
Yes, I have my husband Roy with me tonight.
Great, great. And the next is not here, and I believe it's Sandy Sanchez. Is she here? She is not here, but she has been approved for the position of licensed specialist in school psychology for the 2017-2018. If y'all see her, tell her welcome for us, please. We've got a lot of new people.
That time of year.
There you go. Linda Andrus, Michelle Andrus? What are you doing, girl? I haven't seen you in years. Okay. Ms. Andrus is approved, Ms. Linda, Michelle Andrus. She was always Michelle growing up.
She still is.
Okay.
We go way back.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. For the position of assistant principal at South Shaver Elementary for the 2017-2018 school year. Congratulations. Do you have somebody with you?
I do, I have my daughter Lexi, and Miss Ordon, and some of my new school family, and I have some colleagues, Joseph, Nathan, Rebecca, and--
Stephanie. If I was gonna pronounce your last name, how would it be pronounced?
Jarris.
Jarris?
Jarris.
Ah, okay, Stephanie Jarris. Approved, Ms. Stephanie Jarris, for the position of assistant principal at San Rayburn High School for the 2017-2018 school year. Do you have anyone with you?
Well, some Russell's names over here.
There you go.
And my husband Tony.
Nice to meet you, Tony.
And a bunch of my science family, and a bunch of my South Houston family. Hey, my husband, yes, sir.
All right, thank you very much. Madam President, that is it. But it's a good one.
Yes, it is. We congratulate each one of you and wish you well in your new positions. We know you're gonna do a great job. Next is consideration of possible approval of Tasby Benefits Cooperative Inter-local Participation Agreement.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Any discussion?
Just so you know, we do have representatives here from Tasby as well as Bob Tracy, if you have any questions.
Any questions? One more time. Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the Pasadena Vibrant Community Initiative Lead Teacher.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Mr. Kendrick said do a release if they want to.
Okay. If you are here to recognize, to be a part of the people that just received a new position, you're welcome to leave at this point in time. We'd love for you to stay, but if you'd like to leave, be our guest.
I don't think you convinced them.
Thank you.
Erica got married. Ordon.
Oh, sure.
Eric Ordon got married.
You wanna go ahead? Okay. Board members, before we move on, I just wanted to let you know from Tasby, we have Steve Orta, the director, and Cole Hinchell. I hope I didn't butcher that too bad, the vice president, okay? And we're excited about this new partnership. We think it's gonna be very beneficial to us and, of course, all of our staff.
Thank you for coming down.
Next is discussion and possible approval of additional personnel or other payroll increases for 2017-18.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Board members, before we move forward on this next agenda item, I just wanted to speak a little bit about what's been going on since we last met at our budget workshop. When we last met, we had some numbers that were plugged in for our revenues and, of course, all of our additional expenses and it gave us a deficit that I know none of us are happy about or comfortable with, but we're just kind of facing the facts of what our state legislatures have not done for us. When you're funding public schools at about 38%, in the past, you did that at 50%. We know what the impact's gonna be and it's not good for kids across Texas. So, when I put this item in, it was in good faith that our numbers were solid. I got news about 5:00 yesterday that our numbers were not where they need to be. There were a couple of areas, ADA payment related to our taxes, various revenue sources that were not going to be considered to stay the same as what I had presented to you at the last workshop. So, I'm gonna ask that you pull this item until we can give further time for our legislators to come back together. We're hopeful that they'll see the need to increase funding. We are, of course, want to be optimistic, but we're also being realist at the same time, so we're gonna scrub the budget and scrub the budget before we put you an agenda item like this in front of you and have solid numbers for you. So, I'm just asking, at this time, we pause on this and bring it back to you at a later time.
Thank you, Dr. Powell. Let's move on to, the certified personnel is for information only, so let's move to the educational section. Consideration and possible approval of the 2017-2018 Memorandum of Understanding between Pasadena ISD and the Harris County Juvenile Board.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval to continue, effective September 1st, 2017, participation in the interlocal government records management cooperative coordinated and administered by the Harris County Department of Ed.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of revised ADA snapshot, snap shot time for selected Pasadena Early College High School students in grades 11 and 12.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of the 2017-18 Interlocal Agreement between Pasadena ISD and Harris County Community Youth Services to provide a youth service specialist for the summit.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Madam President, I'm gonna have a pause here again, the consideration and possible approval of our participation. In part of this, we talk about adding our next agenda item, the SAT administration, that would be new to our district. The reason we were bringing this forward was because of that domain that, of course, we have not performed as well as we would like to in. We know it would help our students greatly, but again, it's a new offering and we want to push the pause button and bring this back to you, perhaps revised. Of course, we're gonna continue the PSAT, but that new part of the SAT administration, it needs more discussion in light of the recent budget changes.
Okay. Let's move on then to consideration and possible approval of contract awards with Skyward Inc. and Integrated Systems Corporation through Education Service Center, Region 19, Allied States Cooperative, for the purchase and hosting of a new student information system and gradebook.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion?
I have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Sullivan.
Is this going to replace our present?
Chancery. It will replace chancery.
It's going to replace chancery.
That is outdated, and I'm sure Mr. Allen could go into much greater detail on that, but a committee was formed some time ago, and they've been working for probably over a year now in finding the very best software that could do that job. And so that implementation will begin and continue throughout next school year so that we're successful in moving from one system to another.
Very good.
And this will have a maintenance agreement with it, right, Mr. Allen?
Yes, ma'am. There will be a maintenance agreement.
Is it going to require quite a bit of training for our employees to become accustomed to using it?
It will require some training, but the training is provided in the contract, and we've talked to other districts about the training that they received, and we're confident that the number of hours of training that we have and the training we'll have available will be sufficient to have a smooth transition. We also will not go until the 18-19 school year.
Correct.
So we'll start forward planning in the spring, and so that, you know, we'll be training as we need it. And so we won't be trying to train everybody in the district at one time. You know, we'll train schedulers, we'll train counselors, and so that's the way the training will take place.
Great. Thank you so much for all of your scouting on this project. It's much needed.
Well, a lot of work was done before I arrived here, and I guess, like they said, we had a committee of about 100 folks, and some of the steering committee members are here. If you don't mind, I'd like to recognize the...
No, please do.
Alan Brown, who's my Executive Director of Student Systems, he really... He really carried the torch on this. And then we have Beverly Whitten, who's our Coordinator for PMS. We have Renee Hent, who's User Support for the Student Management System. And then we have Joyce Boyd, who is the Director for Compliance. And Jamie Burtt, Director for Student Services.
So they really didn't get started on this before we needed it, did they?
No, no. I think they did. We made... There was a conscious decision, and I think it was a good decision to pause and wait a year, and this is just the right time for us.
Well, thank all of you members, because you realize and know how important this is to our district.
And we're going to hope and pray that we don't have the same problems we had with chancery in the beginning.
Well, everybody had problems with chancery, okay? So we certainly won't have those types of problems.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we've had discussion. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of the 2017-18 Agreement between Avondale House and Pasadena ISD for Education Services for the Tuition of Six Special Education Students.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval to enter into the 2017-18 Interlocal Contract between Harris County Department of Ed and Pasadena ISD for Tuition and Educational Services at the Academic and Behavioral School East.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval to enter into the 2017-18 Interlocal Agreement with Harris County Department of Ed for Music Therapy.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion?
Aye.
Go ahead.
Is this going to be offered to all of our students, the select number?
Debbie's behind you.
The music therapy is only offered to the students who have that in their ARD.
Okay.
And I don't know the number of students that is, but I want to say the last time we looked at it, it was around 15 students.
And Harris County's going to provide the music?
Harris County already provides that, and so we'll be... We'll continue those that have it in their ARD packet.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of 2017-18 Contract between Shiloh Treatment Center and Pasadena ISD for Residential Placement of One Special Ed Student.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
First.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of 2017-18 Contract between Pasadena ISD and Shiloh Treatment Center for Tuition and Educational Services for Seven Special Education Students.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of 2017-18 Memorandum of Agreement with University of Houston Clear Lake for Two BCBA Graduate Assistants.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of Authorization to Enter into Interlocal Agreement with Region Four Education Service Center for Professional Development of LSSP and Leadership Team.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Bailey. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries. Next is consideration of possible approval of the Bridge Up at Meninger Model Magic Grant Award.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it, motion carries.
Take a breather. I've got to get to my... This is a presentation.
Okay. Presentation on Pre-Kindergarten Program Data and Proposed Tuition-Based Half-Day and Full-Day Programs.
We have Rebecca Terry that'll come forward for this to present to you.
Well, there's supposed to be a PowerPoint. There it is. Good evening. How are you?
Good.
Good. I'm glad to be here and share some great news with you and talk a little bit about our pre-K program, if I can get this to go. Oh, it's the blue dot. Come on. There we go. Okay. So I'd like to talk a little bit about two things tonight. The benefits of full-day pre-K, and these are the benefits in our school district, and also a little bit about a tuition-based pre-K that we're considering in the district. So first of all, here's our enrollment, and this is an approximate enrollment for this year, and these numbers are based on the assessment piece that we looked at. So we have a few more English children in our program than our bilingual children, but you can see our full-day and half-day are kind of 50/50. We actually have more kids in our full-day now than our half-day. So this is the first year ever we've had more children in the full-day program than the half-day program.
Just remember, board members, we only get funded at the half-day, even though we're providing the full.
And you're so kind to fund the rest of the full day, and we're seeing lots of benefits. So I'd like to share some of our literacy scores with you, so you can see, and they're in your handout, and I'll show them on the screen, so you can see how our students are doing. We have more students becoming readers in our full-day classes, but we also have some children in our half-day classes also becoming readers in pre-K. And we're noticing better attendance, slightly better attendance in our full-day. So here's some of our data. So if you look at our concepts of print, on one side of the screen, you'll see our English data, and on the other side, you will see our Spanish data, and you'll see a little bit of a difference between the two, but we have gains in our full-day anywhere from 9% to 16%. And this is based on data that come from our teachers with observation, and they turn in through Edge of Foria Aware. Then our letter identification, at the top, you see lowercase letters; at the bottom, you see uppercase letters, and we have gains anywhere from 8% to 11% in our full-day classes. With letter sounds, both in English and Spanish, we have 11% gain. And what I'd like to say a lot with our letter sounds is where you see 97% and 68%, 86% and 75%, many of these children come to school not knowing any letter sounds. So this is huge data for our kids, both in full-day and half-day. And then this is the data I'm very proud of this year, and this would not be possible without the grant funds. We purchased leveled readers for all of our pre-K teachers this year. They've been begging for them, and with the grant funds, we were able to do that. And we did a lot of professional development, myself and the two pre-K coaches that were also funded through the pre-K grant. And we have a lot of children reading in pre-K this year, and I had the privilege of doing many walkthroughs. I think I've visited all but four pre-K classrooms this year, watched every pre-K teacher teach in small group instruction, and what I can say is we have a really great program in this district. Even with some of the numbers you're seeing here, our teachers are learning, and they want to learn more, and they're very excited about our new pre-K coaches, and they can't wait for these two ladies to work with them again next year. Here's our attendance rate, and what we noticed when we pulled the second semester averages is that our full-day attendance is actually up a little bit over our half-day attendance. When I look at this, I'm like, ooh, we need to work on this a little bit more, but we are seeing gains in the full-day. So there's another piece of research I want you to think about, and this is called Teacher Conversations. I thought that the gains in full-day would be a lot bigger than what we actually saw in this, so I started asking my half-day teachers and my full-day teachers, why do you think half-day is still scoring fairly close to full-day? And here's what a lot of the half-day teachers said and the full-day teachers that used to teach half-day have said. Number one, our kids in our full-day classrooms, they adjust more quickly to classroom routines, and so our full-day teachers feel like they get into curriculum a lot faster in their classrooms. Our half-day teachers are telling us that they're still having very little time to cover Science and Social Studies, and we want to see Science and Social Studies in pre-K. In fact, we just revamped the curriculum for our full-day teachers, and we're seeing lots of Science and Social Studies in full-day, but not so much so in half-day. There is no time for recess or PE in half-day. We see lots of recess, and a lot of our full-day kids are going to PE as well. And there is no time for art and music in our half-day program. So what's half-day doing? They're teaching reading, and they're teaching math, and they're doing it very well with the time that they're given. So at this time, do you have any questions before I move to the next piece?
What kind of science do you teach at pre-K?
Well, lots of hands-on science. We actually cover physical science, life science. We do a lot of sink and float. What else do we do? You know, I just revamped the curriculum. I should be able to think about all of it. A lot of awareness of body and body parts and health issues, like how do we stay healthy? Trying to think through the curriculum through the year. Push and pull, how do things move? Very hands-on. And for social studies, we really try to incorporate that with language arts, so we have a lot of poems that go with Science and Social Studies, and we pull that in with our shared reading piece.
Thanks.
Okay. Anything else?
I think the music and art part that you're not able to do is also very important.
I do, too. I'm a music person, so I totally believe in music. We incorporate a little bit of music throughout the day, but I believe that kids need to have instruments in their hands, and kids need to be singing and learning about pitch and learning about rhythm, and there's not a whole lot of time for that in half-day.
Same way with art.
Same way with art.
Creativity.
Yes.
We stifle that in our educational system.
And I will say that I have seen... We provided a little bit of professional development this year on art, and I've seen some teachers do some great things, especially in our full-day classes with art, so it's been nice. So we're looking towards moving more in the direction of tuition, and one of the things that we want to do is use a sliding scale. The last two years, we have offered some tuition, very limited, kind of piloted it. Two years ago, we piloted a tuition program with some employees' children. We had two parents sign up their kids. We were excited that we had two. This past year, we offered it to employees and offered it to a couple of families that just happened to come to registration later in the year, and their children did not qualify. And the principal called and said, can I offer them tuition? And Karen and I both said, yes, please do. And they were excited to get their kids in. So last year, we had seven kids paying tuition. It didn't bring in a lot of money, but it brought in a little bit of money to the district. So this is our proposed tuition charts for the year. We looked at the sliding scale from last year and kind of made it look a little friendlier, kind of pared it down a little bit to make it easier on the schools as well, and so you can look at that. And then where do we want to start this year? One of the things that we want to do, because we know we had five schools last year, that their English classes set fairly low in numbers all year, and when we looked at their pre-K roundup numbers, it was kind of low, and I've already talked to all five of these principals. There are five schools out there that we really want to offer tuition in the half-day classes starting in August during preregistration. That would be to employees' children in and out of district, and any family that comes to preregistration and they don't qualify, we want to be able to offer them something.
Ma'am, could you explain that tuition a little bit to me as far as the cost?
The sliding scale?
Yeah.
One of the reasons we went with the sliding scale is when we qualify children based on income in the eligibility piece.
Is that based on semester, that cost?
This is yearly cost. We also have it broken down by semester and... Well, we have it broken down by monthly, so I can send that to you if you would like to see that. But we did sliding scale because we know some of our families that come to preregistration just barely don't meet the income, and we know they can't afford to pay a lot of money, and we want to make sure we get every kid in that we can. So what we did is we looked at the National School Lunch Program chart, and so where you see qualifies, if you looked at the National School Lunch Program chart and put it beside it, you would see how those families, like a family of three that makes $35,000 a year, they qualify, so they would not pay tuition. But a family of two would not qualify, so here's what we're proposing. They would pay for half-day. We would divide that by nine months to get their monthly.
So that's nine months for $2,000. On the full-day household making $35,000.
Yes.
That's a good deal.
It's a bargain.
Yeah.
It really is a bargain.
That is a bargain.
And who wins is the child.
Yeah, yeah. Well, everybody wins.
Yeah, everybody wins, but I'm more concerned about the kids, because I want the kids in.
Sure, but I mean, you take a family struggling in the cost of healthcare, not healthcare, but childcare, daycare.
Right.
That is...
It is very much a bargain.
And this will be a board... And the item next is whether or not we want to accept this proposal. Just that way.
That's why I like... Got one, got to get the other thing.
So once we do that, because Karen told me I had...
Just one question.
Yes.
Was there any... I mean, starting out the baseline, was there any idea as to how to cover the cost, at least like of the teacher or something? And that's a clumsy way to ask the question, but I mean, how did y'all come up with, say, these numbers, any of them? I mean, where'd you start?
I mean, where'd you start? And I'm just curious.
We really did start with the National School Lunch Chart. And the idea for this chart came out of San Antonio. Are you aware of their pre-K program? They have a city-based pre-K program that they, the city actually voted on about three years ago. And it's really not connected to the district. It's city-based. And when I looked into their program, they also offered a sliding scale tuition. I believe ours, the last time I looked at ours, I may have upped the prices a little bit more than theirs. But it's based on trying to get everybody in at a price that they can pay.
Spring Branch also?
Spring Branch has a one, they have one tuition rate, but then they use the sliding scale to give scholarships. So anybody that says they can't pay the rate, then goes through the process that our parents would go through, and they offer scholarships based on sliding scale. They're very similar to other districts.
How do they stack up against, and again, like, it costs so much to have a teacher in that classroom. How does it stack up against the cost of
From what I can
having that kid for, having that child in your school for those nine months? And I'm just
Right. From what
Just very curious, not a, there's no point to this except curiosity.
The conversations I've had with my colleagues that work in other districts that have tuition, especially if they have some type of sliding scale, the benefits are we get more kids in, because if we don't have a sliding scale, we lose kids. The bad part of that is that the district picks up the cost. I know Spring Branch, I believe they're picking up a big portion of the cost for full-day because of lack of funding.
So like, how many kids do we try to have in pre-K classroom?
Twenty-two to one.
Twenty-two to two, because we have a para-professional in there as well.
What are their hours on a full day?
The full day, next year for sure, will be, is it 440 minutes full day?
Yes.
Yes. So full-day for pre-K, full-day pre-K will go the same amount of hours as every other K through four.
Okay.
Half-day will be 190 minutes next year.
That would be a good recruiting tool for teachers, because I knew I could take my child to a situation like that.
Just add that most of our kids, we only get the half ADA for our kids who qualify. So this, if they're above, you know, at the $50,000 rate or more, bringing in $3,000 will be more than the qualifying kids bring in.
Right.
Does that help?
What is our half ADA, Nina? What would that, our half ADA is about that?
$3,000 bucks? Yeah.
The San Antonio group, is the pre-K offered in the public schools or is it a separate facility?
It's a separate facility. And I believe they are still building the program in San Antonio. It was a three- or five-year process back when they started it.
With certified teachers?
I believe so, but I would have to look into that. But I'm pretty sure they are certified teachers.
Thank you.
I'm sure they're not as good as our certified teachers though. I'm pretty proud of my teachers.
This kind of kindergarten program in San Antonio, it's funded by city tax base?
It is funded by tuition, and I would have to look in to see if they throw city funds in. I'm imagining that they would have to as well.
Are there federal funds for this type of program or state funds that are available? I know there's some.
There might be some state funds available. I can look into it if you'd like more information. Yeah. It's, we need full-day funding, for sure. We need full-day funding, for sure.
I agree.
We do.
It'd be nice.
It would be very nice. It'd be very, very nice. Because that would cover the para and the teachers' pay. So we will offer at those five schools and then after Labor Day, we will monitor enrollment. And once we see where we have openings, then we would like to open up both full-day and half-day openings everywhere to anyone that would like to come and pay tuition. So that's kind of where we are with our tuition piece.
Do we have a space?
We will have some space. Full-day was fairly full this year, and we can only enroll kids into the English classes because you have to qualify to be in the bilingual classroom. And it's really interesting watching enrollment go up and down all year long, because I monitored every classroom all year long. And so we would go from having 10 full-day English openings to 20 full-day openings to 30 to 20 to 10. I mean, it was very up and down all year long. But I anticipate that we will have a few full-day openings after Labor Day, not many, but a few. And we'll definitely have half-day openings after Labor Day.
Thank you.
All right? Any questions? More questions?
Awesome, more.
Thank you, thank you. You should be proud of your pre-K teachers. They're doing a great job.
We are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is consideration and possible approval of School Health Advisory Committee report for 2016-17. And this is a presentation.
Yes. Board members, we have Becky Collins here that's going to help present. And I'm assuming Ms. McNeesh, Amber, you'll be
My job.
All right. Well, Amber McNeesh will be presenting as well, so we're glad to have both of you.
All right. Good evening. For the SHAC highlights for 2016-17, we elected a new parent co-chair, included a parent designee from each campus to ensure parent involvement, updated wellness policies, both local and regulation, approved the first Healthy Fundraiser Vendor Booster-Thon, established partnership with Wellness Partners for faculty and staff from Camp Gladiator YMCA and Fitness Connection, successful walking school bus at Ritchie and Bike to school event at Red Bluff, approved partnership with MD Anderson and Shell Oil for the Virat Community Initiative, recognized community partners who have contributed to our coordinated school health efforts, supported the Excellence in Wellness Awards promoting coordinated health, school health on all campuses. And our SHAC action items for 2017-2018 will be develop district recess guidelines, utilize the Alliance for Healthier Generations Healthy Schools Program as the wellness policy monitoring tool, research school start time and coordinate efforts with the District School Start Time Committee, and review and potentially recommend a human sexuality curriculum to be implemented in 2018-19.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Anybody have any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for all your work.
Next, I bring your attention to student achievements on page 179 through 81. Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you, Hope. I need a motion. This is consideration and possible approval of the SHAC report for 2016-17.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Next is student achievements. And now, if you would look at pages 179 through 181, these are students that were involved in the Beverly Hills and Queens Intermediate School, grade seven and eight. The National Pentathlon, these are the results from that. You will see that our students have done extremely well in this, and certainly we congratulate them. Do we not have the student pentathlon like we used to?
We do. Pat Sermis is here, so she's very proud of those students. And then they go to an online, this is online.
Awesome, awesome. Awesome, awesome. Thank you. And we say congratulations to these students. And if you pass that along, I appreciate it. Okay, next is another, it is policy update and review. And Mr. Roberts, I think you have the floor in this one?
Yes, ma'am. Madam President, we met at our committee meeting at 5:30, and we would like to move to adopt Tasby Localized Policy Update 107 affecting local policies listed on page 183 through 184 with the exception of DC local.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries.
Madam President, we also, it is recommended that the Board of Trustees adopt a local district update 2017.02 affecting CV local and CDC local.
Motion by Mr. Roberts, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries.
That's all we have.
Thank you very much. Next is the financial section. First is consideration and possible approval of budget amendments.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of an order approving an amendment to a standby bond purchase agreement and an amendment to remarketing agreement, both relating to Pasadena ISD variable rate unlimited tax school building bonds, Series 2005-B, and enacting other provisions related thereto.
And board members, just so you know, John and Nina have been working with John Roebuck, the financial advisor, and Tanya Fisher, bond counsel, in preparing this for today.
Do I have a motion?
I'm so moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Thank you very much for being here. Next is consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes. This is 709 Garrett, 071-026-019-0051.
So moved.
Second. Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of resale of foreclosed properties for delinquent taxes. 1308 Friesa Road, 08409000021.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Okay, the next has been pulled. Operations section, we're moving to consideration and possible approval of a budget to purchase new school buses and funding from fund balance.
And board members, remember you approved a resolution that if a future bond was approved, that would be able to pay back the fund balance. We're in need of 31 buses, to be honest, but we're bringing you 20 at this time. And hopefully, again, the budget will look brighter in the future and we can come back with those additional buses. But we have worked well with the Transportation Department to come up with a number that we can live with for this next school year and keep our kids safe and moving to school.
Thank you.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Bailey.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion.
Question. What is the biggest factor on the decision on changing the buses? Is it mileage or is it wear and tear? Is it just overall?
Do you want to come up, Kevin? Or you want to send Jim Bob or Oscar up there? Send them both.
Oscar probably is a better answer.
Come on down. Come up as a team. It's years and mileage, I'm sure, but you got to go to that little microphone over there. Sorry about that.
There's three factors that we take in place. One of them is age, mileage, and cost of operation of the bus expenditure.
Are most of our buses now still gas, diesel? Or did we ever go to any clean gas?
They're all diesel. We have one by gas, one by gas.
You may see it over off the Beltway getting fueled up.
What's the mileage normally on those things when they're worn out? Just wondering.
On the diesel buses?
Yeah.
We normally get close to about 200, 250,000.
Are they Cummins or what kind of?
You got Cummins, we got Cummings, we got Detroit's. We got a few that Mercedes.
Okay. Which one do you get the best mileage out of?
They all average about nine miles to the gallon.
Holloway? Holloway?
Yeah.
And his short stops. I like your driving the freeway.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just want to say, board members, Oscar keeps our fleet up and going. Sometimes he probably feels like he's doing it with bubble gum and Band-Aids, but he does an outstanding job with his team with the limited resources that we have.
Thank you very much, Oscar.
Okay, motion has been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of resolution concerning the sale of surplus real property located at 9129 North Broadway.
So moved.
Can we all make that motion?
Yes. Motion by Ms. Sullivan.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Kendrick. Discussion.
Congratulations, Mr. Kendrick.
I think we should put the sales price in there.
I just need about 20 more of those.
That's it?
That's all. Just to feel warm and fuzzy.
Around a good hour.
Six million, 500,000.
Six million, 500,000. So all those
That's awesome work, too.
Yes.
Yes, it is.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. That figure got to me. Okay, the next item on the 35-foot, 230-foot wide right-of-ways has been pulled. Next is consideration and possible approval of Harris County Flood Control District right-of-entry and temporary construction easement for the construction of a new pedestrian bridge located at the north property line of Gardens Elementary School.
We'll move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kendrick, seconded by Ms. Sullivan. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 005 for the early college annex at Sam Rayburn High School Project.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Bailey. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is consideration and possible approval of allowance expenditure authorization, AEA number 010 for the early college annex at Pasadena Memorial High School Project.
So moved.
Motion by Ms. Sullivan, seconded by Mr. Roberts. Discussion, hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. The ayes have it. Motion carries. Next is the construction update. Anyone have any questions or comments on construction update? Hearing none, we'll move on to the miscellaneous section. Communications, there's not any communications.
No.
Public comments, we've had our public comments. Point board committees. I think you should have had in your board book, the board committees, let me go ahead and read those out to you. Personnel will be Marisol Kiano as chairperson, Marshall Kendrick and Nelda Sullivan will serve on that committee. Policy legislative committees, Fred Roberts, chairperson, Jack Bailey and Kenny Fernandez. Facility committee, Jack Bailey will be chairperson, Fred Roberts and Kenny Fernandez.